I'd like to call this meeting to order. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick?
Here.
Mr. Brubaker?
Here.
Mr. Bax?
Here.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Here.
And Mr. Gebhardt?
Here. Great, everybody's here and accounted for. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to the Wednesday, May 17, 2017 Board Meeting. I'd like to introduce everybody up here. To my immediate right is Board Member Kevin Brubaker, and Vice President. To his right is Board Member Jim Bax. To my left is Senior Board Member Mike Gebhardt. To his left is Board Member Annie Karstoffen. To her left is Board -- or, excuse me, not Board Member, Superintendent Dr. Tom Jama. And to his left is our Treasurer, Joy Klickinger. Okay, with that said, we'd like to move along on the agenda to Presentations. I believe there is -- nobody signed up today for any Presentations, is that correct? Any Presentations besides yours, obviously?
Right, we're not to visitors' comments.
No visitors?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but Presentations, I'd like to do that.
Oh, are we gonna do yours first? Okay, well, let's fire away. Madam Treasurer, the floor is all yours.
This is the five-year forecast required by the Ohio Department of Education to update the five-year forecast in May. So, we're not only making sure that you're aware of what our five-year forecast is and where it stands at this point, but also fulfilling that requirement. In front of you, you do have the five-year forecast. There are some out there for the audience to follow through. Follow with us if you'd like. What does the forecast cover? It's general fund only. The rest of the money that comes in to the district comes in for specific purposes. The building --
Oh, finger wise.
For instance, like, the building fund dollars will be for the building. Grant dollars that come in are for specific purposes. So, this particular forecast, the five-year forecast, is only general fund. I gave you a lot of backup, and we're not gonna go through it number by number. However, it's merely an update of the forecast that was given in October. If you have any questions, feel free to, you know, either jump in there or give me a call later. The five-year forecast is based on history and on trends. The law requires that the forecast be updated, and however, it can be revisited at any time. The first forecasted year in the forecast is fiscal year '17, and that's what we're currently in. So, this forecast, our fiscal year runs from July 1st through June 30th. So, the first forecasted year has the benefit of 10 months of actual expenditures. So, as you know, the closer the future is, the easier it is to predict. So, I believe that our fiscal '17 numbers should be pretty close. My agenda for the evening is pretty simple. We'll start with an overall summary, look at a little closer at the revenue assumptions and trends, and then do the same for expenditures. And then, lastly, I'd like to put it all together for you. If you're following along in your five-year forecast packet, turn to page three, please. This is the executive summary. You'll hear me using words like "if" and "assumption" quite often, and that's because I don't have a crystal ball, and these -- this forecast is based on assumptions. We have a five-year levy expiring in fiscal year '19. The $4.9 million ending balance that you see there in the chart assumes that it gets renewed. If not, as you might expect, the ending balance drops, and in either case, though, our ending cash balance remains positive. Said differently, we start using our savings account in fiscal year '18, and we still have money in our savings account in fiscal year '21. Also, please note that the new buildings and their impact on this forecast has not been included here. I anticipate by the October forecast having a ballpark number of what the building project will do to the general fund and what it'll mean to our forecast. But at this point, I don't even have a ballpark number to put out there, but I do anticipate one by October. If you'll go to page -- to page four, this is the revenue overview, and as you can see, we're assuming the renewal of the levy, and that will keep our local revenue pretty flat. TPP, tangible personal property, is being phased out of line 1.05, and that's by state law. So, you'll see a regular decline in that item. Turning to page five is more detail on the real estate. General property tax makes up a little over 35% of our total revenue. The county will go through a reappraisal in 2018, and we expect the values to go up. However, that's not a given. We still have, you know, a lot of decreases coming in, if no other place than the mall area. So, we'll have to wait till that appraisal is done till we actually know. However, whether it goes up or down due to House Bill 920, our revenue gain or loss is very minimal. If you look at page seven, this is our state funding page. Our state funding makes up over 45% of our revenues. Our funding has been very much dependent on student count and any changes in the state funding calculations, or any changes in the way in the governor's biennial budget has always affected us. The governor's current executive budget has our district in the funding guarantee. Now, that has its pros and cons, but that means if our enrollment declines, our funding from the state, at least at this point in this biennium, would remain the same. Now, a couple more increases in our student numbers, and we flip back to being a fully funded district. So, that's kind of right on the edge, but I have, and we'll keep an eye on that, but in this five-year forecast, I've got it based on a guarantee. Page eight shows the funding we receive for economic disadvantaged students. While this isn't a large number or a large part of our budget, it's only 3%, a little over 3% of the budget. I think it's worth mentioning that we have 71, over 71% of our general student population is included in the economically disadvantaged. So, it would be nice if we could turn that around, but at least the state recognizes that that poses more expenses to us. If you look at page 10, all other operating revenues. The largest category in this line item is the tuition we receive from open enrollment, students that attend here that live in other districts. And yes, we do have quite a few of those. That adds up to approximately 1.7 million that we take in from students that attend here that do not reside here. Also in that line item are Medicaid reimbursement and special ed reimbursement. Both of those are approximately $600,000 a year.
That's a gross number, correct?
Correct.
For enrollments?
Right. Okay, if you look at page 12, it's the expenditure overview. And overall, the expenditures are shown with an average of 3.55% increase, which isn't bad with a newly negotiated agreement. But if we look further into this, if you look at page 13, the salary cost. In fiscal year '14, the district reduced staffing by 45 teachers, 21 classified, and one administrator. The projection is for the salary cost to increase by 3.4% over the life of the forecast, of which three of the years have already been negotiated. Only fiscal '21 is unknown, but I carried through what we had at the 3.4. On page 14, employee benefit cost. The benefit cost also decreased over the past five years due to the combination of staffing reduction and employee contributions. The projection for the increase in insurance is set at an average of about 12% each year over the last four years. Currently, it looks like we will probably take a higher increase in the premium starting next year, if we go with the recommendation of our consultant, which I believe we will. But for right now, we don't have board approval or that on it, and I've got that in the forecast as an increase. Page 15, purchase services. It's the second-largest component of the district's budget. The largest component of this line item is tuition paid to other districts and community schools. So, it's our resident students attending elsewhere, and that particular dollar amount is right at $14 million a year.
Hmm, okay.
So, hopefully, we can get that turned around. And when we get to the enrollment piece, I do have some relatively good news on that. If we look at page 17, capital outlay. This line item has the greatest change of all the lines. In the past, actually, starting in fiscal year '15, the board had an additional $1.5 million for capital improvements added to this line item. With the passage of the bond issue and the district building all new buildings from the building fund, we no longer need the money for building repairs. The capital improvement set-aside money has been removed from this line item. I'll explain more on that once we get to line item 5.04. But you can see where we had rather large expenditures, if you're looking at the graph, and then, starting in fiscal year 2017, it takes quite a drop, once we knew that we didn't need to invest in our old buildings any longer. Okay, if you look at page 19, all the other objects. The main component here are the county auditor and treasurer fees. And not that this is a big part of our budget, but I think sometimes people forget that collecting taxes actually costs us money, too. And on this line item, our auditor and treasurer fees have been running right at a little bit over $600,000 a year.
Wow.
So, I think it's a pretty good chunk and worth mentioning, so I -- Okay, if we look at page 20. Now, here's where the capital set-aside now appears. Now, I talked about it in the capital outlay line. It no longer is there, and it currently shows up in this line 5.04. Now, I would, I'm gonna take a stab at explaining how this all came about. In fiscal year '15, the board started setting aside $1.5 million. So, they set it aside for fiscal year '15, '16, and '17. That totaled $4.5 million. Out of that $4.5 million, only $1.7 was spent. So, that left $2.8 million in the set-aside that'll be transferred to the building fund with the board's approval later this evening on the agenda. So, that was money that was set aside, wasn't used for capital expenditures, and now we're gonna use it as a capital expenditure out of the building fund, but it must be transferred there before we can spend it in that fashion. Now, for the rest of the four, or the rest of the five-year forecast, if we set aside $1.5 million in the remaining years, '18, '19, '20, and '21, that would be $6 million. Now, I've changed the forecast to only reflect a set-aside of $2.2 million additional going to the building fund, leaving the remaining $1.6 million in the general fund. Now, that was something that we talked about and is subject to change, but just so you know, that's where it currently is. Everybody understand that? Then, on page 21, it just shows the changes in the current year's forecast between what I gave you in October and what you're looking at today. Page 22 is the standard format that's required by the Ohio Department of Education. If you go onto their website and pull up any district that you wanna pull up, it'll, they will all be in this format, including ours will be there once we get it submitted. Our old one is there now. The remaining pages deal with enrollment as it relates to our funding. It's very interesting reading. It can get confusing in that some kids we count, yet we don't get, we get the funding for it at 59% because that's our state share. Yet, when they go to a community school, we have to pay the entire amount out, so it becomes a negative. But what we're seeing is an improved trend. We're retaining more students than we thought we would at this point. This year, we retained about 100 students more than we anticipated. I think possibly the word on the street about all the opportunities that we have at Alaria Schools is getting out, and hopefully, the new buildings will also generate some increased interest in attending here. Some other things that we've done that hopefully will keep this trend of retaining more students in our favor is the increased busing and additional options for some of our students that we had to put in other facilities because of their needs. Hopefully, we can keep those here and keep them in our student count also. There's a couple sheets on student enrollment, mostly for your reading enjoyment, and should satisfy curiosity. Right now, I would like to go back to page three, which was the executive summary, and just point out a couple things that I think are most noteworthy as far as the five-year forecast go. The cost of providing our current level of services is projected to exceed revenues in fiscal year '18. The cash reserves remain positive during the forecast period. Enrollment and our property valuation continue to be important factors in our revenue stream, and they are very difficult to forecast. All current levies must be maintained, or our financial picture will worsen considerably. A study of the impact of the building project on our general fund operating expenses will be completed in time for the next five-year forecast presentation in October, so stay tuned. And most importantly, I just wanna say one more time, we are committed to being responsible stewards of all the funds that pass through our schools. With this explanation, I'm asking the board to later in this agenda approve the forecast as presented for submission to the Ohio Department of Education.
Great, thank you, Madam Treasurer, for a very thorough, detailed report. Board, any questions, comments on the report?
I have a question. Can I just, I think you may have answered it in the, your summary, but I just want you to clarify for me. Okay, you said the levy is due to renew, is that November of '18 for beginning January of '19?
Correct.
Okay, and then you said that we're stable through 2021?
Yes.
Or what would be the effect of the levy by 2021? Because I think you may have answered it in a closing statement, but I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I think, I think that I may have also, I hope I said it correctly. If you look at the top graph there, or not really graph, but spreadsheet, and you'll see that ending balance without levies by fiscal year '21, we will be in the red, without the levy, without the renewal.
No.
Okay, we're not talking additional dollars yet, we're just talking renewal.
Renewal, uh-huh.
Without the levy, we would have to make up this difference. However, we haven't factored in to this yet, the new buildings and the effect of that. So, hopefully, by October, and hopefully, we'll see it a little bit clearer by then.
I would assume with the structure of the new campuses, there are gonna be significant synergies that we anticipate saving also, that should be incorporated in this, in the next forecast, correct?
I would assume that, yeah.
Okay.
However, there are things that kinda notch it up, like air conditioning. But I would assume, overall, it will be a savings, yes.
Right, okay, great. Other questions?
Yeah, one other question. Joy, on your, on the enrollment assumptions, the way I'm reading this, the assumptions that were used are more conservative than what we're seeing, than what your actual data is?
The assumptions, I'm keeping at a decrease of 200, 220, maybe?
Yeah, 220.
220, and currently, this year, we decreased 120. So, yes, they're more conservative.
So, yeah, so, yeah, so the numbers are conservative. Okay, good.
Good question. Other questions?
And if you're looking at it closer tonight and come up with any more questions, please go through the call.
Okay, great, thank you, Madam Treasurer. Outstanding report, look forward to reading it in more detail. Moving along on the agenda to the visitor comments. The Alaria School Board encourages and appreciates citizen interest in meetings of the Board of Education. Normally, the board will meet twice during the month and make accommodations to allow public participation. Persons wishing to address the board for up to five minutes may place their name on a sign-in sheet five minutes prior to the start of the meeting, indicating the topic they wish to address, or make a written request to the Treasurer's office one week in advance of the board meeting to speak up to 15 minutes. Each meeting's participant will be invited to speak directly to the board, so their remarks may be clearly heard and questions may be asked. Today, there were no sign-ins, so no visitor comments for today. Board discussion items, I don't believe we have anything set discussion-wise for today. Any off-the-cuff discussion items for anybody today?
Just like to say that we went to the Special Olympics, and I was amazed at the number of people there. It seemed like there was more this year than last year.
I heard it was a great turnout.
It was a perfect day for it, though, it was cool, but the only thing that I thought was we could do to improve, Mr. Wal's hamburgers, if we ever have a frisbee toss, they might, you might use those as the frisbees.
Interesting, okay.
Wow, a new event.
So, we'll have to get another chef's apron and get Mr. Gebhardt back there helping out.
I agree 100%, excellent, I'll second that.
Great, thank you, Mr. Gebhardt. Moving along on the agenda to the meeting minutes, the minutes from the May 3, 2017 meeting have been posted, and hopefully, the board members have had an opportunity to review those. And I would ask for an approval of the meetings as posted for the minutes.
I'll make the motion, board meetings from the last meeting.
I have a motion by Board Member Gebhardt. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Board Member Karstoffen. Any questions, comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries, thank you. Treasurer action items, Madam Treasurer?
Number one, donation. To acknowledge, express appreciation, and accept the donations as listed in your agenda. Most of these, if, all of these have to do with the Special Olympics that were held and donations for scholarships. Number two, transfer of funds. To approve the transfer of $2.8 million from the general fund to the building fund. Number three, monthly financial reports. To accept the financial report for the month of April 2017, with, which includes all bank reconciliations, investment report, cash balance report, and appropriation expense reports as detailed in enclosure G3. And those are my recommendations for this evening.
Great, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the treasurer action items?
So moved.
Motion by Board Member Brubaker, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Board Member Bax. Any questions?
For the Special Olympics, was there, did I read somewhere that some Ford workers gave $25,000?
Denise, do you wanna talk about that? I think it's awesome.
United Auto Workers Union donated to the Special Olympics.
Okay, will that come later, or it's, I don't see it in there?
Special Olympics, Ohio.
Yeah, it doesn't go to us.
Okay.
Yeah, so, not our Alaria Schools, the one that we generate through.
Yeah, that's outstanding, that's great.
It helps all of our families.
Other questions, comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. A treasurer other?
The updated May five-year forecast. To approve the updated May five-year forecast for the Alaria City School District, which covers the period ending June 30, 2017 through June 30, 2021, as presented.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the forecast?
So moved.
So moved by Board Member Karstoffen.
Second.
And a second by Board Member Bax. Questions, your comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. And are there any other items, Madam Treasurer?
Not this evening, thank you.
Great, thank you. Moving along on the agenda to Superintendent action items. Dr. Jama, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, board members, this evening, I would like to recommend the following items under Superintendent actions for the board's consideration. Item one, to approve the overnight field trip to the University of Finley for the boys' basketball team to attend team camp on Monday, June 12, 2017 through Tuesday, June 13, 2017, as detailed in enclosure K1. Item two, to approve the overnight field trip for the Alaria High School cheerleaders to attend Dennison Grandville, Ohio camp on Monday, July 11 through the 13 through 2017, as detailed in enclosure K2. Item three, to approve the overnight and out-of-state field trip for the boys' soccer team to attend team soccer camp at Edinburgh University in Edinburgh, Pennsylvania on Thursday, July 20 through the 22, 2017, as detailed in enclosure K3. Item four, to approve the payment of the stipends as listed below, $100 per day, not to exceed two days, to the following staff members for technology and professional development. This stipend will be supported by Title II-A grant funds. This is for our two teachers who'll be working with all of our IT and data services department this coming fall. Angie will be the middle school representative, and then, again, Mike West will be the high school. But this has to do with the major spaces that we're expanding in the district, which is pretty exciting. Item two, $100 per day, not to exceed two days, to the following teachers for their participation in professional development, to write their common assessments and align instructional processes to better prepare students for the AIR test in American history and American government. This stipend will be supported by the Title II-A grant funds. This is gonna be an awesome opportunity for these teachers to meet their world history teachers and American history teachers. They're gonna meet plan and write curriculum together. They're going to meet plan and write curriculum together. So it's a collaborative effort. Item three, $28.30 per hour, not to exceed 10 hours to the following teachers for preparation of training the big day curriculum. This stipend will be supported by the Title II-A grant funds. Next bullet item, $100 per day, not to exceed one day for the following teachers for their participation in big day preschool curriculum training. This stipend will be supported by Title II-A grant funds. And the two that I mentioned earlier will be the ones actually working and teaching the professional development program for these preschool teachers. Next bullet item, $50 per one-half day, not to exceed one-half day to the following staff members for participation in summer InVision Math 2.0 training. This stipend will be supported by the Title II-A grant funds, and again, it is for summer training in our math curriculum. This is the first time, and Anna, correct me if I'm making or saying this correctly, this will be the first time that our curriculum in math will be continuous from kindergarten through the 12th grade.
Through Algebra I.
One.
Yep.
Pretty exciting stuff. Next bullet item, $500 stipend to the following teachers for their additional duties in English-language learner services. This stipend will be supported by the general fund. We're very fortunate to have these two individuals and other individuals in the district who do speak Spanish. We are seeing a increase in students who are Spanish-speaking where their parents do not speak English. So they are called quite frequently for phone conversations, school report issues, things of that nature that help us out with the English language barrier. Next bullet item, $100 per day, not to exceed one day to the following teachers and their participation in the ELA collaborative work. This stipend is supported by Title II-A grant funds. And what's nice is these three teachers will be working with staff members from 10 other districts to improve our language arts curriculum within our school district. So it's a collaboration, again, expanding outside of, or happening outside the boundaries of the Elyria City School District. And then the next bullet item, $28.30 per hour, not to exceed 10 hours to the following teachers for their participation in the Ohio Graduation Test Tutoring Program. This stipend will be supported by the general fund. This is a program that we started about six years ago at the high school whereby these teachers do heavy, intense tutoring to the students who have yet to pass the OGT and who need that test, or several tests, to receive their high school diploma. And just being involved with it for so many years, there's no doubt in my mind that these teachers are making a difference and we're getting additional kids to pass. The biggest thing is we need to get them to attend. And that's a huge piece, and they're working on that each day. Item five, approval of purchase order, to approve the purchase order to Pearson for the high school AGA math adoption in Vision. This purchase order is not to exceed $223,000. This will be supported by the general fund, and this is the math program I just told you about that will take place K through, K through the high school, Algebra, through Item six, to approve the purchase order to Apex Learning. This purchase order is not to exceed $55,000. This will be supported by the general fund, and as you know, last Board meeting, we had several staff members, Ann and a team of presenters, present the Pioneer Academy to you. This Apex is the learning program that will be utilized by the Pioneer Academy, the alternative program that we are establishing and implementing this fall. As we were talking about this today, the $55,000, that is for a multi-year contract, which saved the district $17,000 in fees. But with the money that we've already have saved with implementing this program at a smaller level this year, we've already paid for the actual $55,000. So it's, again, pretty exciting stuff. Item seven, approval of purchase order, to approve the purchase order to Renaissance Learning for Star Enterprise, a student growth measure benchmarking system. This purchase order is not to exceed $50,000. This will be supported by the general fund. This is the program they use at the elementary level mandated by the state of Ohio that we benchmark our students. So the STAR program is one of those activities that the state will accept as a benchmarking category. Item number eight, to approve the purchase of nine, to purchase of 945 Lenovo N23 Chromebooks and stands from CDWG at a cost not to exceed $270,000. Price is at or below Ohio Council of Educational Purchasing Consortium pricing and is supported by the general fund. And again, this will help improve and get our students, we're almost one-on-one with technology. Item number nine, to approve the 2017-18 Jaworski Physical Therapy Incorporated Athletic Training Service Agreement as detailed in enclosure K9. That's our physical therapy that we have with Ann and, am I drawing a blank?
Laura.
Laura, Ann and Laura, who do a remarkable job with our school system. Item number 10, to approve the Ab- Budsman's Program Alternative Educational Services Agreement as detailed in enclosure K10. And this is a program that will be housed in Avon, where they will be accepting students with special needs to help promote their learning, deal with behavior issues, and sending the students to this program is going to be significantly cheaper than some of the other programs that we've been sending to. And with that, Mr. President, that concludes my recommendations under actions by the superintendent, and would ask for your consideration this evening, please.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion, to approve items one through eight, and 10 and 11, and ask that item number nine be done separately, please.
Okay, I have a motion to approve all items in the superintendent action items excluding number nine. Do I have a second?
Second.
No, wait a minute, except number nine, isn't it?
Yeah, except number nine.
Except number nine.
Yeah, okay. Yes.
Second.
And I have a second by Board Member Kristoffin. Questions? We'll do number nine next, but I have a question. We have about $500,000, $600,000 worth of software and hardware on here, and makes, it's a little concerning from a Board perspective. It looked like one of the items did go through our consortium for the hardware, but the software items don't go through that? Is that correct?
With software, we met most of the time. It's the only company that sells that software.
Okay.
They're very specialized. Now Apex, as we presented, replaced one that went defunct that we were using, does so much more for us. What we, those private companies don't often go through there, but they're the only ones that sell that particular software.
Okay.
So we go through them. Now, I will tell you again, as Dr. Jama said, like for Apex, because we bought multi-year, we ended up saving, we got almost like buy two, get one free.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So we saved a chunk of money by negotiating a multi-year contract.
And in big picture, I would assume we're still within our overall IT budget on an annual basis?
Our IT services and IT budgets, we're still within what was already allocated to our budgets. I haven't asked Joy for another doctor.
They do an extremely great job in monitoring the spending within their departments.
Okay. This seems like an area that we tend to have items on our agenda, so we see them from that perspective. But we don't see the overall big picture on the IT side. I was wondering maybe down the line, if we could have some discussion, Ann and Brian, maybe if you could inform us how we do spending-wise, maybe compared to other districts and that, what sort of dollars we're spending on pupils and that. It's just unusual for us because it isn't within the budget, but it's over the $25,000, which is an internal benchmark that I believe the prior boards-
Policy.
-set up, so that's why most of these IT expenditures end up getting in front of us. All right, with that said, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye. Motion carries. I'd also like a motion to approve the Jaworski Physical Therapy Contract as noted in item number nine.
So moved.
I have a motion by Board Member Gebhardt, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Board Member Kristoffin. Questions, comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker?
Obstain.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to superintendent other, I believe we might have someone from the press waiting for this one to get approved here, huh? Dr. Jama?
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. President. It's my pleasure to present to you tonight the graduating list for Elyria, the Elyria High School for the class of 2017, to approve the May 31, 2017 graduation list of students from the Elyria High School pending completion of all local and state requirements for graduation, and to further commend all the graduates and their families for their accomplishments, and to wish the graduates success in their future endeavors as listed below. Pretty exciting times. That concludes my recommendation under superintendent other, Mr. President.
Very exciting times. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by Board Member Brubaker, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Board Member Bax. Questions, concerns?
Do we know how many are?
Four, 454, 453, 443.
Something like that.
443. With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations, Lisa. Moving along, personnel action items recommended by the superintendent. Dr. Jama?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I would like to make the following recommendations under personnel action as recommended by the superintendent for the Board's consideration this evening. Item one, resignation of certified staff. To approve the resignation of the following certified staff as detailed below, Brianna Windsor, Ely, and Cynthia Farley, Elyria High School, wish them the best of luck as they move on to different adventures. Item number two, termination, to approve the termination as detailed below. Many of these items that you're going to see under this section this evening are routine items that have to take place each school year, at the end of the school year. Several positions and categories are terminated and then rehired again for the following school year. So when we bring you the agenda items in August, a lot of these same names will be on there for recommendation to hire again. But to approve the termination as detailed below, the termination of the following long-term substitute contracts for the 16-17 school year to begin on June 2, 2017, the termination of daily substitute teacher contracts on day 61 rate. Next bullet item, the termination of all daily substitute teacher contracts, supplemental contracts, and tutorial contracts for the 16-17 school year on June 2, 2017. Item number three, to approve the one-year limited contract for the 2017-18 school year effective August 30, 2017, for the certified staff as detailed in enclosure M1. Item number four, continuing contracts, to approve the employment on continuing contracts, this is granting tenure to the following certified staff as detailed below. Certified staff to be employed on a continuing contract for the 2017-18 school year to be effective August 30, 2017, as detailed. Item number five, renewal, to approve the renewal of the following certified administrative contracts as detailed below. Item number six, to approve the appointment of the following certified staff as detailed below. First one, Ann Conroy will be an intervention specialist at Northwood, and then Catherine Grau will be a long-term sub-gate teacher at various locations. We have Heaven Yearly, who will be an intervention specialist at Northwood. And then we have several staff members who are being elevated from half-time to full-time. Item number seven, to approve the payment for up to 20 hours each at employees per diem rate for providing additional student scheduling and enrollment for the period of June 12 through July 31, as detailed below. These are the counselors at Elyria High School, who again, we work with students throughout the summer. You know, I think a lot of times, we believe that school's out June, July, and August, and a lot of things don't take place, but that's when actually all the work and the planning gets done. So these counselors work with families throughout the summer on a rotation basis to help with scheduling, so come August, you don't have hundreds of kids in line waiting to get their schedule checked or changed, or new enrollments as well. Item number eight, resignation of classified administrator, to approve the resignation of the following classified administrator as detailed below. Item number nine, to approve the retirement of the following classified staff member as detailed below, Laura Dembick and Paula Scusa. Again, wish them the best of luck as they enter a new chapter in their life with retirement. Item number 10, to approve the termination of the following classified staff members as detailed below, the termination of the following security resource officers, our SROs, for the 16-17 school year on June 1, 2017. Next bullet item, the termination of the following Murray Ridge personal attendance for the 16-17 school year to begin on June 13, 2017. Item number 11, to approve the unpaid leave of absence of the following classified staff members as detailed below. Item number 12, to approve the renewal of the following classified administrative contracts as detailed below. Item number 13, to approve the stipend not to exceed two days for facilitating the physical move of media center at their hourly rate for the following classified staff members as detailed below. And these individuals will be working with Sandy Thompson at the high school as we will be expanding our maker space and our technology at the high school media center itself. Pretty exciting.
Great.
Item 14, to approve the appointment of the following classified staff members as detailed below, and David Watts, he will be moving from substitute building operations to the new utility at Crestwood Elementary School. And then several other individuals with changes in their position. And with that, Mr. President, that concludes my recommendations under personnel action as represented, as presented by the superintendent this evening.
Great, thank you, Dr. Jama. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel action items recommended by the superintendent?
So moved.
I have a motion by Board Member Kristoffin, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Board Member Gebhardt. Questions, comments? I do have a question on the limited contracts. It appears that Brianna Wisner is on there, yet she is resigning. We're approving her resignations, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. She is resigning, and that needs to be removed.
From the limited contract?
From the limited contract list, that is correct.
So we will, when we approve it, we will be approving it without her on there?
Yes.
It's in the enclosure.
Just make it clear that the motion is amended.
Okay. Yeah, the motion, is it okay, amended to remove Brianna Wisner, is that okay?
Wisner.
Wisner, excuse me, Wisner.
We made the motion.
I'll amend the motion.
Okay, and then you'll second the amendments?
Yes.
Okay, good. Any other questions, comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Dr. Jama, superintendent report.
For that, Mr. President Elick, I'd like to have Gary Taylor introduce any staff members that are here tonight, joining our Pioneer family.
Sure. Dr. Jama, members, we're very pleased, we have some of our entry teachers that will be joining the Elyria Schools in 17-18. You know, we're in the full recruiting mode now for our staff, our student staff and support staff for next year. So with that, I'd like to welcome, as you had already introduced, Ann Conroy, Ann who is coming from Bowling Green, interview to myself.
All right.
And Katie Grau, not the young one, the other young one.
Great.
Welcome.
Super, welcome to the Pioneer family. Dr. Jama?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items this evening that I would like to report out on under superintendent report. This past week, I had an opportunity, and again, to, I love to just share this information, visited multiple schools, and you know, it's such an exciting time right now because of field days, and the weather's changing, and the weather's warming, kids are out on the playground having fun. I know there's several field trips taking place, I think even one of our board members attended one of the field trips this week at-
Yes, he did.
-at Prospect Elementary School. At, at Prospect Elementary School. But again, just getting in and out of the classrooms and in and out of the, the buildings, Prospect, I'm drawing blanks, Elyria High School, McKinley this week, just watching the great things taking place in our classroom. You know, it's, it's a tribute to our staff and the teachers and our support staff who work with our kids every single day. There has not been a time, and I could, I could say this personally, going into these classrooms, the amount of times that I do, that there has never been a time that I haven't seen instruction taking place with kids learning and teachers teaching. It's been phenomenal. So I, I give kudos to the staff out there in the Elyria City Schools. Couple other items I want to share with you. It was in the paper this past week, but something we're very proud of. As you know, two years ago, we made a strong commitment to listening to the community and hearing what they had to say and things that they wanted to see changed. And one of the items worked to get help in getting their kids to school. And as you know, over the last two years, we reduced our radius for school buses from 2.0 to 1.25. We added opportunities for students at the Elyria High School to get busing to, to school in the morning. And the biggest thing that I want to talk about tonight and the most exciting thing is, starting with the 1718 school year, we will be providing busing to our preschool students here at the, the Village. And this busing, again, we believe will make a difference in, one, our enrollment, but two, listening to the families. We heard what they had to say and we're taking action to meet the needs of our community, which is a tribute to you as the Board of Education and our administrative and instructional team throughout the district. So it's pretty exciting that our, our littlest learners will have an opportunity. And I'll tell you, I watch these little guys get off the bus in the morning and they grab their hoops and they walk in with their little line and I'm telling you, there's nothing better than watching it. So, pretty exciting. Last Saturday, Ann and I had an opportunity to, to participate in the early college graduation program at Lorain County Community College. I had an opportunity, along with the superintendent from Lorain, Jeff Graham, to go up on stage, shake the hands of all of our graduates. I believe there were 78 graduates. And these individuals earned their associate's degree last Saturday, and many of them you approved tonight on the list who will earn their high school diploma. So it's kind of in reversal, but who cares as long as they're getting those, those degrees. But the program was, was absolutely amazing. I want to concur with what Mr. Gebhardt said earlier. The Special Olympics last Friday was absolutely amazing. Kudos goes out to Denise Blatt, the Special Education Department, and the, the team for putting that together. That's absolutely huge, huge. And what I wanted to do is call Ann up, if you would come up, please, and just share a, a couple things with reference to what's taking place in the district. And again, there's nothing like getting it firsthand.
Thank you, Dr. Jama. One thing that I wanted to bring up today was, most of you probably read the article this, was it this weekend?
Yeah.
That we were awarded, along with two other school districts, a grant partnering with LC3 from the Board of Regents to start to partner and send some of our students out in the workforce to take CCP classes, College Credit Plus, from community members in the workforce. I know next year, one of the partners is Highland Software, and we're really excited that this is the beginning of, of what we've talked about, creating that STEM pathway for a lot of our students. So we have some very eager juniors that would like to, to get into this for next year, but it's $150,000 for three years, and it's a continuing of a partnership that we have with that advanced technology department over at the college. Remember earlier, I reported that they are actually sending a professor from their staff to Elyria High to teach robotics and advanced fabrication. So we're really excited about this. I think we've got students that are starting to, as I said in the, in the quote, use their hobbies to plan their careers, which is, we all know, when you love what you do, it makes all the difference. Other than that, we're, we, the last two days, we had the strain your brain. So if there are a lot of tired fourth, fifth, and sixth graders out there that came over here and worked with a lot of logic puzzles and, and things of that nature the last two days, and we're just getting ready for the summer and all the, we have, we have 220 little ones going to Camp Invention in June. We have, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, six technology camps?
One even the Saturday.
One even the Saturday, coming up this summer. And just a lot of activities for our students outside the school year that we're really excited about. So, good things happening.
Great. Thanks for the update. Wonderful.
Just, just one more comment. I'd like to commend our treasurer, Joy, this evening for doing a, a great job with the five-year forecast. And I love hearing that news that we're, we're losing students, but that is being reduced. And our goal is to, in years to come, to have that number completely turned around whereby we will be accepting, and when we go to the student enrollment, it'll be at a positive number. But I'm very proud of the staff in this, in this school community right now because they are, they're not leaving and we're gaining numbers and I'm pretty, pretty pumped about that. But that's because of all the great things taking place in our buildings and the programs that are being put into place to help our kids, which is the number one priority.
Great.
That's all I have.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Jama. We appreciate that, and we appreciate everything that the staff also does and the administration team, and there definitely is a lot of good things going on at the Elyria Schools. And last, on the agenda, we have some business to take care of. I believe we have the, let me see here, the policies and regulations update as listed in Board of Education items. I'm not going to go through all of them there that you see them on the policies and regulations. So I would ask for the board to approve the second reading and adoption of the board policies and regulations as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by board member Gebhardt, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by board member Bax. Questions? Commas? Concerns? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Ms. Karstarfen?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye. Motion carries. And with that, any other items from the board members for the good of the cause? None?
Mr. Elick, just a reminder that tomorrow night, the city is.
Yes.
My son I had, Tommy. The city is presenting the movie.
Oh, yeah.
That, that has to do with the history of Elyria, then and now. I invite the community to, to come out and see that because the Elyria Schools does play a major role in the video and the great things that have happened over the last hundreds of years.
Great. Super.
I do have, I do have one. A comment on the, on the field trip yesterday. The second grade, second grade class at Prospect went, visited the Cuyahoga Valley Scenic Railway for a program for the day. And it, we had about, we had about 65 kids. Train was full, so I mean, there were, I think, four other, four other school districts there. And so the, so the, the train ride was into the, you know, into the valley and along the way, the kids got to, the people there at the, from the railway presented some, showed the kids some things about the various wildlife and things that they will see along the way and things that are different about them, including a variety of pelts, whether they be beaver or coyote or whatever. And it was kind of interesting that the kids were, the kids were very concerned about, you know, where they, where they got these things. And so then there had to be some additional explanation that, you know, the animals were in fact dead, you know, before. That, no, we didn't go out and purposely kill the animals to, to get the pelts. But the program was very interested, the kids, the, the kids were, the kids were good. In fact, I had one of the conductors come to me afterwards and said that this was probably the best behaved class that they had had all year.
Great.
And it was probably the, you know, the exceptional chaperones that were, that were there. But, but, but in all seriousness, no, the kids were very good and they represented us very well.
Mr. Bax, that is something that we hear, I hear, nonstop when I'm out in the community, when I'm out with community leaders, is that when your kids come, they absolutely represent the Elyria City Schools with pride and spirit and respect. And there's not a day that goes by that I don't hear that from somebody. So it's just something to be proud of.
Yeah. There was lots of, there was no shortage of spirit yesterday. It was.
They have spirit.
But it was contained really well. So, yeah, it was fun.
Great. Thanks for sharing. Jim, any other items? With none, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Motion by board member Brubaker, excuse me. Second?
Second.
And a second by board member Gebhardt. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstarfen?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.